Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the road call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Hello.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. God, we are thankful and grateful for today, Lord. You have given us life, health, and strength. We ask for your guidance, that you lead us in the paths that you set before us. Thank you that you have blessed our hands, Lord God. Thank you for your instruction. Thank you for your guidance. We thank you for the opportunity to be used, Lord God, in advancing your kingdom, Lord God, and advancing the business of the City of Gadsden. We thank you for what you're doing in our city. We thank you for the things that you are bringing to pass. We thank you that you know the way that we take. We thank you that our steps are ordered by you. And we come to an agreement now that everything that you have purposed, everything that you have destined for this city, that you will continue to bless our mayor, bless our council, Lord God, bless those that work with the mayor, bless our city workers, Lord God, bless each district, that we can come together and continue to do the things that please you. Thank you that your will will prevail, Lord God. We thank you that we have your faith, the God kind of faith, to call on things that do not, as though they will. We ask these blessings in your son, Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on March 14th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 10th through March 16th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. I don't believe we have any today. Item eight, unfinished business. Item eight A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 709 Hooks Lake Road in District Two. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on February the 14th. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to adopt this resolution to abate.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located at 1321 East Broad Street from R1 One Family Residence District and B1 Neighborhood Business District to B2 General Business District. The owner plans to develop rental units for service and retail establishments that could be affected by the proposed extension of I-759. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? If you get you to come to the podium, that way the folks on television and Internet can hear you. If you will, please give your name and address.
My name's Kevin Ferguson, 119 Howland Lake Drive, Asheville, Alabama. I just, if y'all had any questions, anything, you know.
Anybody have any questions about what's taking place here?
I will say that this is in, you've pivoted, basically. You had, if I understand it right, Mr. Ferguson, you had tenants on your property. The extension of 759 is going to erase some of that. So you've basically kind of flipped it over to the other side and provided that rental, will be providing that rental space for your tenants.
Absolutely. You know, trying to maintain that area there.
Right.
That we have about seven, seven to eight tenants. Hope that we can, the first phase will take care of seven to eight tenants, and then probably the second phase will add more tenants.
Well, thank you for your investment in Gadsden, and thank you for being willing to help those tenants. I'm sure they were probably wondering where they were going to go or what was going to happen, but you've provided us solutions, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
We do have requests for the council to take action today. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and consider the ordinance at its first reading.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 10, our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 410 Southside Avenue from R2 Multi Family Residence District to O1 Office District. The owner, a licensed counselor, purchased the property to establish an office, and abutting and surrounding properties are zoned O1. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? We have a request for the council to take action today. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and consider the ordinance at its first reading.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a point of, you know, just a public point here. When you guys see us acting right after the public hearing to approve these things, the way our agendas usually work is we get a very detailed explanation of these projects the week before in pre-council. So assuming nobody stands up in objection during the public hearing, we just go ahead and act to approve them rather than wait an additional week to approve them. So there's no special treatment here. It's really just a formality.
Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 405 Evans Street in District Three, Faith-Based Investments Property Management LLC and Beverly M. Charles being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in November of 2021. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is our final public hearing. It's a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license. West Hood Quick Shop LLC, DBA West Hood Quick Shop, located at 2701 West Megan Boulevard in District Six, has applied for retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution approving issuance of special event alcoholic beverage license. The City of Gadsden has applied for a license for the Mayor Memorial Bash Event to be held at 90 Walnut Street on May 27th, 2023. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to say I'm really looking forward to the mayor slash council Memorial Day Bash.
That's right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution awarding bid number 3501 for one 2023 or newer Chevrolet 3500 HD with bed. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Donahue Chevrolet. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
What is this?
This was, we discussed this last week. Ty, would you, could you share, shed a little light on this? I would try, but I'd probably have it into a Volkswagen in no time at all, so.
Oh, you're cool. Just to reiterate what we talked about before, our storm slash emergency truck, that's what this is for, that went down several months ago.
How old did you say that truck was?
That truck is about 12 years old that we're replacing there with about 210,000 miles on it. Was going to cost us around $15,000 just to replace the motor in the truck. So this truck here is the one that pulls for First Friday stuff, for all of our other events that put out barricades and all that, too. But he is our first responder truck, so that's what this will be going for.
Got you. Thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 15 through 17, our next three items are resolutions approving agreements for the 2023 Summer Concert Series performances to be held at the amphitheater after First Friday events. Item 15, and we're going to look at all these at the same time. Item 15 is from Crescent Moon Entertainment. The band is called The American Flyers. It's going to be held on June the 2nd. The amount is $6,500. Item 16, also provided by Crescent Moon Entertainment, is a band called Bluff City Bandits. That date is July 7th, and that amount is $3,000. Item 17, also from Crescent Moon Entertainment, a band called Radio Incorporated. That'll be held on August the 4th, and that amount is $3,800. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all three resolutions.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. Can, I guess, maybe Parks and Rec or something? Let's see, this is Parks and Rec, right?
Uh huh.
All right. Can we get, I guess, some identity of these groups?
Yeah, they did that last week, I believe. Jen, is Jen here?
I wasn't here, so I was just doing a follow-up.
Okay. I know one is, you know, I'm not going to remember all of them, what they are, Councilman Avery, but one is a, like, R&B, one is a Motown, and maybe it's R&B and Motown, one is country music, and then one is like 80s, 90s kind of contemporary type music. All come highly recommended. One's from Memphis. I think Radio Incorporated is from Memphis. I believe one of them might be from Nashville, and one from either Atlanta or Chattanooga. And that's about all I can remember.
So no one from Parks is here?
I'm sorry?
No one from Parks and Rec?
No, I don't believe I see anybody from Parks and Rec out there. I mean, but you can. I mean, it's, of course, I guess, Michael, this is cataloged on our Facebook page and, I mean, last week's meeting, or was that in pre-council?
That would be in pre-council.
Pre-council, okay. I'm sure you could reach out to Jen, and she would be glad to share anything with you that you would want to know. Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Item 18 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Fishers of Men Ministries Incorporated. This is for city sponsorship of a fishing tournament to be held at Gadsden Couso Landing on October 17th through 21st, 2023, and the amount is $8,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 19 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This transfers $1,713,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to fund the acquisition of property from the Gadsden Airport Authority that was authorized by resolution number This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it at the next meeting. Item 20 is an ordinance amending the Community Development Block Grant Program for a time period of 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan to include economic development and neighborhood revitalization activities. It also amends the 2020 CDBG-CV budget to reallocate unexpended COVID funds to the Etowah County Community Food Bank for the purchase of a box truck. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it at the next meeting. Item 21 is an ordinance adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Action Plan and Budget. This adopts the fiscal year 2023 action plan to complete the goal of meeting the needs set forth in the consolidated plan. It also adopts the fiscal year 2023 CDBG budget totaling $999,724 for the period from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it at the next meeting. Item 22 is for new business. Don't believe we have any.
Mr. President, if I could, just for timeliness to get this out of the way, I wanted to, I misspoke, and it told some folks that we were going to vote on these CDBG actions today. I was wrong. Today was the first reading. We'll vote next week. But just to clarify, one of the things that this did was the Center of Concern and the United Way had some leftover resources that they weren't able to fully expend from their original allocation from the CDBG budget, and they actually are giving that money back to the city to be utilized in other places. So that's one of the things this does. And then the other two things is we're adding the $100,000 micro enterprise program, which is a small loan fund that will be accessible by low to moderate income residents only. You'll have to meet some guidelines on your household income before you would qualify, but it's specifically focused on low to moderate income families. And then the final thing that this does is it adds $313,000 to the CDBG budget for the building of a disabilities accessible, individuals with disabilities accessible playground at the sports park. And that'll be built right next to our Center of Champions, or City of Champions Field, which is the hard surface field where individuals who may have physical disabilities that keep them in a wheelchair or other types of walking devices can play on this hard surface. So they can play baseball, they can play soccer, lacrosse, all these other sports. This is like a multi-use hard surface field for special needs students. So I just want to make clear, well, this is going to add that micro loan program and then add the playground for children with disabilities.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that, Councilman. No problem. Item 23 is department reports, committees and boards.
Hello, Josh.
How's everybody?
Doing well. Thank you.
Good. Talking about the new facilities and all down in Gadsden State, had opportunity this weekend to go down there and actually see it. Wow.
Yeah.
I mean, impressive. It's nothing like it was when I was in school there back in 19 and something. We've got a couple of things that we wanted to talk about today. The first of those, if you haven't noticed, it's extremely cold. So continue to remember the three things, pets, pipes, and people. Check on your pets. Don't leave them out in this cold weather. They will be very mad and probably redecorate your living room for you when you do let them back in. Pipes, make sure that they're covered, and if you've got somebody who lives in your neighborhood, you know, lives alone, elderly, it takes five minutes to go check on them and make sure that everything is okay, just to provide a means to be a good neighbor and a good citizen. Secondly, and this will come as a shock to nobody, Etowah County has a chance of severe weather coming up on Friday. It's going to be an overnight threat, which, you know, always poses some challenges, but we will, we will address those. We've already had discussions with our division coordinator from the Stadium A as well as the National Weather Service. As we get closer to that event on Friday, they'll be able to pick more substantial and concrete information from that. And then the last thing that I wanted to do was introduce Ann Payne to you. She is our newest emergency management specialist. She's going to be doing finance. She has experience with grant writing, has experience with working in disasters. So it'll be, it'll be new learning for her to learn the city's processes and policies and all of that, but she's got a really good foundation to work from, and I was just going to give her an opportunity to introduce herself.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. I look forward to learning all about it.
All right.
Well, let me, let me just start you off. We don't, we don't allow tornadoes here.
Okay.
Okay? We don't allow floods. We're against rain. Rain is a no. And mid 70s and above is ideal.
It's perfect.
Sunshine.
That's what I've ordered.
If you can, if you can hit those things, you're going to do great here.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and welcome to the EMA and to the City of Gadsden. Thank you. Yep. Heath, if you'd like to share with us, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Heath Williamson, Director of Engineering. It's a little easier to talk to you guys from this point because it's not, I'm trying to bend my head around, and it just gets a little awkward. But we did want to report, this had been discussed briefly, but did want to report that the nuisance abatement grass cutting contracts are out. They're currently in advertisement now. And so we've been able to put those packets together, working with Brian and the Building Department on the lots that come up. Of course, nuisances in each district as they do arrive. These contracts, or I'll say, to begin with, there are seven, and so we did split up one contract for every district to help that process as we go through the year. Mayor Ford did direct us to direct these contracts to take care of all city lots, state lots, land bank authority lots, and then, of course, the nuisance abatement lots that come up over time. And so we do have these out. The bids are scheduled to open April 11th. I have scheduled a non-mandatory, but certainly encouraging, or encouraging each bidder to attend a pre-bid meeting on April 4th. That is on the third floor. But the first thing that they'll need to do is to contact the Engineering Department, Get registered. Let me get them a bid packet, and then on that pre-bid date, we'll take everybody through any questions they have, walk them through the process. But I certainly wanted to get in front of you folks, please let your constituents know. Anybody that wants to come take a look at the bid packet and hopefully bid this project, we encourage it. Certainly want to get as much involvement as we can, but I think it's going to take a team effort to get that word out as we desire it to be.
I agree. And with that in mind, I'm sure y'all are already planning to do this, but if Michael could put together some sort of social media post about that that we could share, that would be great, or maybe even just.
We'll make sure we work with him.
That's good. I want to commend your department, of course, Brian Harbison and his department and the mayor's staff, and I think Tina, this comes under your vertical market, I guess, is Public Works. This is our last four years, constant problem with not being able to cut the grass, and it could be over 12 inches tall. It's very unsightly, brings rodents, snakes, all kind of creatures and critters, and it's just not, it just doesn't look good. This is going to help clean up our neighborhoods, and I'm excited to see this happen. I think it'll, it'll go a long way in developing community pride and neighborhood pride, and it just cleans up our city. So thank y'all for, for doing that. And listen, bid on these contracts. If you're a landscape lawn cutter type person, please, please come and bid. We'd love to have you. Any other department reports, committees, or boards? All right, we'll go to remarks by mayor and council. I think Ms. King, you are speaking instead of for the mayor today, right?
I am.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to decipher these notes here. So last Wednesday, we had great meetings with ADECA Director Kenneth Boswell, Aldoc Director John Cooper, and Tourism Director Lisa Tell. We spent the day in Montgomery, had some wonderful meetings, and just received a great update on one of those. We received an update from Orchestra Partners on their downtown riverfront, riverfront vision plan. We had our strategy meeting with a grant writer, and they are going to provide us with five target areas where we should pursue grants, as well as help us pursue those grants. That was a very interesting meeting that we went through to come up with these five strategy areas, and I'm excited to see what all they come up with for us. The Airport Authority has hired a new engineering firm and approved a job description for an executive director, and we will see new activity at the airport very soon. Michael Rogers is kicking off a website upgrade, and this should take about six months. Today, in the next hour, I believe, hour and a half, Chief Reed and Sergeant Intrikin are speaking at the Senate Committee hearing on Senate Bill 65, so y'all think about them in about an hour. Tomorrow, we will have submitted an earmark application to Adirhol, Katy Britt, and Tuberville. We're leaving for DC later this week, and we have meetings set up on Thursday and Friday with Adirhol, Katy Britt, Tuberville, ARC, HUD, Army Corps of Engineers, and several others that we're waiting to confirm. And we are lining up all of the grant opportunities that we can while we're there. And then Monday, April 3rd, very important, put this on your calendar, at 1:00 PM, we have a ribbon cutting at Gadsden State Sports Complex for Phase Two.
Wonderful. Thank you. A lot of activity coming out of our mayor's office with the staff, and we're very grateful for that. A lot of, I think a lot of fruit's about to come, so I know there's been a lot of hard work going on for that, so get ready. I think people in Washington know that there is a Gadsden, Alabama. I don't know if they knew before, but they know now. All right, we'll go to Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President. Back. I first want to say thank you to Mr. Howell and Mr. Hill for the opportunity to kind of ride with them on yesterday throughout District One. It was very exciting, and especially coming off the heels of our district meeting. So we're looking forward to enhancing District One with making sure that we, we're not littering. There was a lot of good, it was good to ride with them. Let me just say it that way. So we're excited about that. Thank you for taking the time to kind of show me some things that I hadn't paid attention to and didn't really see. I think that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. I was excited to hear that you had that trip in your district, that's with Public Works. I think that pays dividends.
And let me just say this, it was good riding and really seeing activity in the district, good positive activity on behalf of the residents, as well as seeing things taking place.
Right.
Roads being paved, work taking place. It was, it was, it was a good ride. Looked good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to again thank Mayor Ford, the council, the Just want to again thank Mayor Ford, the council, the mayor's staff, all the department heads. Let's continue to talk up the good things going on in our city. There are a lot of good things going on. So really, good comprehensive plan meeting on last week, the Grow Gadsden Campaign is going on. So let's continue to talk up the good things going on in our city. We know there's more good to come, and so let's always be on the positive things of what's going on in our city. And so I'm excited to be a part of that. I know it don't feel like it, but we're now officially in spring. And the reason I know, because the Lord let my birthday fall on spring every year, which was yesterday. Thank you for all the birthday wishes. And maybe it'll warm up soon, so thank you. Also, just want to reiterate, Mr. Ferguson, thank you so much for continuing to invest in our community, and you've been doing that a long time. And so we appreciate what you're about to do in light up the new expansion coming through. Whatever those new tenants have, we know it's going to be brand new. So I just want to applaud you for that, and thank you for investing in the Gadsden area. I just want to highlight that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Councilman Avery.
Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone that were participants of the District Three Health and Job Fair that was this weekend at Carver Community Gymnasium. Also want to thank the staff that was there. Small and intimate, but I believe it got the job done. We will have one every other month, so be on the lookout of a health and a job fair there in the Carver Community area, our District Three. We will move them further down, also connecting our North Gadsden community as well. Habitat for Humanity, Gadsden, Edwell County. Habitat for Humanity, bridging the gap to ownership. Carver Community Center, March 21st at 6:00 PM. The topics is how habitat works, requirements for partners, families, how to fill out an application, and how to volunteer, along with questions will be asked and answered. And so this will go on at the Carver Community Center, March 21st, and that's today at 6:00 PM. So District Three, please show up and be present for this information. The reason for my question concerning the summer concert series of inclusiveness, and I would just highlight and shed a flashlight towards Abertsville if we might. And I'll leave it at that, and then we can go into more discussion later. Also, Councilman Wilson, sorry, highlighted concerning the CDBG funds. I've been receiving a lot of emails for contention with concerning that $315,000 going towards the Gadsden State development, and so it has been clear that it's for accessible playground. And so I am all for that. I'm an advocate for our handicap accessibilities and for the park, along with those grounds that they will be able to exercise their talent. However, however, I will also highlight the 51% of those CDBG funds also that need to be considered in our low and moderate income communities, okay? We do have parks. Each district should have a park in it. And I will tell you, the parks in District Three are not safe for our children, for the most part. We can start there on, I think, Tuscaloosa and somewhere around in that area, okay? Where the old MLK Center is to start, along with our North Gadsden area, okay? But definitely in full support of the accessibility, the accessible playground for our young people at Gadsden State, to be clear. Also, this weekend had an opportunity to be invited, along with the mayor. He wasn't able to be in attendance, so I was there to also represent City Hall for Ms. Lavelle Buchanan. And just to give and highlight, for some reason, a proclamation wasn't able to be issued to Ms. Buchanan, so I will be presenting a resolution from the council standpoint. And here's a highlight for Ms. Buchanan, just to give some fruit to this. Ms. Buchanan is a graduate of Howard University with a degree in radiology and counseling. Ms. Buchanan worked at Gadsden State Junior College as a radiology teacher for many years. After much prayer and dedication, she decided to go back to school and obtain a Master's of Arts degree and her education specialist degree in counseling. She later started working towards her doctoral degree, and she has 20 hours toward in counseling. She had a dream to birth a daycare center that would bring revenue to the church, and God allowed her to birth that dream here in the city of Gadsden, where she do not reside, okay? So she has a, Ms. Buchanan is a member of one of the greatest sisterhoods in the world, which is Alpha Beta Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Iota Omega Chapter in Anniston, Alabama. Ms. Buchanan engaged in simulations, activities that beneficiaries to the communities, and continues the commitment that is fostering lifelong services. She has held numerous positions in the chapter. However, her last position, she has served president of the chapter from January 2020 to December 2022. She is a member of Abundant Life, and this appreciation for her service was highlighted this past weekend. Again, someone who wanted to dedicate her service here in the city of Gadsden, that's how much she loved this place. Even though she's not from here and lives elsewhere, she had an opportunity to worship at Abundant Life, bring this program to Abundant Life, and Abundant Life showed their appreciation to her. And so I will, next week, present a resolution to the body to present to Ms. Lavelle Buchanan, who is a great asset to this city with, when it comes to children's services, as well as to the ministry of abundant life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah. Number one, I'm excited about the ribbon cutting for the Phase Two of the sports park. For those of y'all who still haven't had a chance to get out there, it's awesome. Go check it out. These are the baseball fields and the new complex and the center that's just going to add to these world-class soccer fields, facilities that we built. I got multiple messages over the weekend. I love it because it is starting to warm up supposedly, so soccer's starting to be played out there. And one parent, local parent, texted me, just giddy as they could be, about how amazing those fields are and how proud they were to play on them, and how proud they were to have teams come from other communities from around the state to play on them. And, you know, I don't have children, I don't have, you know, children in the soccer program, but I can only imagine they take this stuff really serious, and it is, I'm imagining, a point of pride for them to be able to welcome other teams from around the region into this city and see a world-class facility. Having said that, unfortunately, I also received a couple of messages yesterday of some graffiti on the walls at our brand-new soccer facility out there, on the bathroom walls and on the walls around the water fountains. While I certainly embrace all of our street artists, I would ask very kindly that please don't deface city property like this. This is a point of pride for so many people. Maybe this council could entertain some sort of an opportunity to define a public art space in the city where individuals could have the opportunity to go express themselves on a more appropriate environment. But please don't vandalize brand-new property. It just costs the city money to fix it, and we are going to fix it. You can graffiti that wall 100 times, and it's going to get cleaned off every single time, so please know that. Also, and I can only imagine Council President Beck has some words about this too, but I will be brief on the loss of Randy Sperlin. Randy Sperlin was my dad's best friend growing up. Some of my earliest memories are being at my dad's apartment and his roommate Randy Sperlin. And he, like I spoke about Mr. Bart Scott last week, also regularly whipped my butt on the golf course growing up. He was a world-class golfer, and he passed away yesterday. And so to my dad and Tim Phillips and, you know, all of those guys, Steve Noblet and, you know, all those guys that were a part of that group, I can only imagine that you're hurting, and I'm getting tired of having to give these condolences about really good people. On to the next point, I would like to thank Chief Bill Partridge, City of Oxford, Chief Jaggers, and Ms. Tina King and Ms. Ivan Nelson for facilitating the Public Works, did a visit to tour their EMAC, their electronic monitoring facility there. Anybody who's been through Oxford lately, you might notice those little blue flashing lights up on certain poles. They've implemented over several years a really expansive camera system that has had a dramatic impact on crime in their community. And I can just tell you, after touring this facility and then going over and looking at their two helicopters and all the other stuff they have, number one, do not commit a crime in the city of Oxford, Alabama, if you were thinking about it. Number two, the days of any crime being able to be committed here in Gadsden are probably numbered two, because this is something that this council has been advocating for, the use of technology in our law enforcement for quite some time. And this mayor and his support staff have obviously committed to moving forward with that. So I think very soon you'll probably see some business before the city council about investing in the technology for our law enforcement officers in this community. And again, I appreciate everybody involved for giving us the opportunity to experience that. That was something else. And just finally, in general, I always like to hit it on the head. And so to Councilman Avery's grander point, I couldn't agree more about inclusion in the city. And I can tell you specifically in years past, for some reason, we have fewer concerts this year, I think, in the summer concert series. Like last year, I think maybe we had five. But I can tell you that it is a deliberate and open conversation, anytime entertainment is booked by the city, about inclusion and diversity of the style of music that's offered. And historically, we have always tried to cover all the genres. I say "we." Parks and Recreation handles all that. All we do is approve the money. But it's something that is talked about regularly, and I can tell you that there's no doubt in my mind with Ms. Ruth in the position that she's in now, that that will continue to be brought to the forefront of any conversation. And then on the last note, to Councilman Avery's point about the CDBG budget, out of the $999,000 budget, I just want to make the point that 110,000 of that is for Section 108 loan reimbursement, which is specifically focused on low-to-moderate income. 202,000 of that is specifically focused for housing assistance for low-to-moderate income individuals. That may include paying a power bill or a rent payment, or it may include as much as replacing a roof or an HVAC unit or getting new windows in houses. And again, that's only eligible to individuals with low-to-moderate income. I see Renee holding her breath back there. I'm sure I probably stumbled on that. Okay. And I'll even let Renee follow up at a later time. But the micro enterprise program, $100,000 for small business loans to, again, low-to-moderate income individuals, is that correct, Renee? And then, and then again, so that's $412,000 of the 999. And then public service grants that go to Manna, the Family Success Center, the Council on Aging, the Center of Concern, Way of the Cross, the James Berry Center, the Boys and Girls Club of Gadsden, Edwell County, and the Charleston House, that totals $84,000. So, I mean, a significant chunk of that money. And again, I apologize if I was wrong about the, can you clarify the housing assistance?
Mr. President, just because I misspoke.
Oh, let's see, where is Ms. Renee? Renee, would you come to the podium? That's all right.
Just because I misspoke, and I don't want to confuse anybody.
No, we need to get it right.
The 202,000 in housing assistance.
Taxpayer money.
That is actually set aside specifically for housing repairs for low-moderate income homeowners within the city.
Right, so it is, it doesn't pay, it won't help pay the bills. That's what I got wrong.
We did have money for that specific purpose at one point, but we do not any longer. So this is strictly for housing repairs for low-moderate income homeowners within our city.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's all I have, Mr. President. Sorry about that.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right. Councilwoman Monatra.
I just wanted to mention that this morning, we had our Public Works Committee, and Tina King offered some very good news for us in the future that we'll be communicating, and that is Part One, that our recycle center will open on one Saturday a month, and we'll be communicating that at a later date. And we will also add that our landfill will be also operating on the last Saturday of every month, and that will begin with April. So we're excited about that. Thanks so much to the mayor's staff, and specifically to Tina King. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, real quick, just thank, again, this council and the mayor's staff and all the department heads for another positive day of work. Just so enjoyable to come up here and work towards the future and work positive, and looking forward to seeing everybody next week in DC, or later this week in DC. We're going to have a good time. We're going to learn a lot of stuff. That's all.
Also, Councilman Robinson turns 50 on our trip to DC, so just want to throw that out there. We'll remind you up there, too, so don't worry. It's a big birthday. That's, and we had another birthday just yesterday. Way to go. All right.
Councilman Smith, only 49. Councilman Robinson, I'm just saying.
Thirty-five, he said.
All right, well, I want to bring attention to another hiring fair. This is sponsored by the Alabama Career Center System, The Chamber, East Alabama Works, and the city of Gadsden. It's this Thursday. It's at the venue at Couso Landing. It's for high school juniors and seniors from 9:00 AM to noon. So in the morning this Thursday, high school juniors and seniors at the venue, and then from noon until 3:00, it's open to the general public. They're asking you to bring your resume. There's dozens of local companies with jobs and benefits and bonuses, sign-on bonuses. There's going to be a total of 80 employers representing 3,000 jobs. Let that sink in for a second. 3,000 jobs. There's people going to be over here at the venue. They're looking for 3,000 people to come work in their company. So if you know of anybody that's not working, or if you know somebody that wants a job that might want a better job than they have, this might be where they need to go, is for the hiring fair this Thursday at the venue. Also, it was mentioned earlier about the Grow, which is the Goodwin Mills and Kaywood engineering firm, urban planning firm, that the city and the council has hired to do our overall city planning. You know, it's a 12- to 14-month project. They're a month or so into it. They want public input, so you can search that on Google, maybe the city website as well, and find the questionnaire. There's a questionnaire that they want our citizens to fill out. They want to hear from you, and we want to hear from you. So please be involved. Now's your chance to share your opinions, and now's your chance to tell what you want to see your city to be. The sports park, I was over there Sunday, and I don't know when the last time I was that cold. It was, the wind was blowing, I don't know, 200, 300 miles an hour or something, and I was freezing. My little five-year-old granddaughter was running around playing soccer, having the time of her life, so that made it all better. But we do have a fabulous facility over there. I did not see the graffiti, so I'm kind of glad I didn't. It would have ruined my Sunday, so that was, but it's a great park, and it's growing, and it's getting a lot of use. I saw we had our first baseball game played at the new baseball, one of the new baseball fields there, so just, and then Tuesday will be the, or the, not Tuesday, when is it? Tina, the ribbon cutting, April, yeah, April the 3rd, I think?
Monday, 3rd.
Yeah, Monday, April the 3rd. There'll be a ribbon cutting for Phase Two. It's just going to be a real phenomenal thing for our city and for our whole area. And then also, I'll mention, I appreciate Jason's kind words about my classmate, Randy Sperlin. I met Randy in 1974 at Gadsden High School. I'd gone to Discu, and he had gone to Litchfield. And so, you know, back in those days, you were enemies, you know, because they were Litchfield, we were Discu. So we competed against each other. Soon became fast friends, probably within the first week of school, with all of those guys that we competed against athletically. And Randy was just, I don't think he ever changed, was always a great guy, never missed one of our reunion events. We just had our 45th class reunion, so he will be missed, and our prayers are with his wife Tammy and their entire family. And it's just, there's just too many of those. I was, took part in a funeral for Bart Scott. I was, took part in a funeral for Bart Scott Saturday. Bart Scott passed away, I believe, on the 12th, another Gadsden High graduate, class of 73, I believe. And, you know, it's just, it's just that time, I guess, in our lives where people are going to be with the Lord, and that was on the heels of Tim Hudak, who also passed away just recently. So prayers for the Hudak and the Scott and the Sperlin family. And then last but not least, due to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC, the council will not meet next Tuesday on March 28th. Our regular schedule will resume on Tuesday, April the 4th. And with that, we will be, oh, you have another?
I apologize.
Oh, you're okay? Councilman Avery?
Two other things, I'm sorry, I'll be quick.
Okay.
One is, those condolences prompt me to remember a, a great Emma Sansom Rebel coach, and that's Buster Gross.
That's right.
So I do want to send condolences out to Kelly Gross and her family. Deeply apologize for not making that announcement in my, in my earlier announcements. The final thing is, I would like to say, the Catholic Center of Concern has a day of shelter for people that are homeless on, on our, the streets during the day, where in need of some personal hygiene, they are in need of personal hygiene. If you can please bring any of the following to the center, Monday through Thursday, between hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Those products are bar soap, shampoo, body wash combo, men, women razor shaving cream, men's, women's deodorant, toothbrush, and toothpaste. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery, for, especially for Coach Gross. Being a Gadsden High Tiger, I know very well who Coach Gross was. He was an outstanding man, an outstanding coach, and, and also would like to offer condolences to his family. He was a, he was an Auburn Tiger. Jason and I can attest to that, and he was, he, he was the motor of men. He took a lot of boys and turned them into men over the years in his coaching career. He, he left an indelible mark at Emma Sansom High School and also in this entire community, so special condolences to that family. Any other, any other comments or things? All right. We stand adjourned. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.